The Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting for Monday, August 31st, 2020 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 20. And this meeting is being recorded by GCTV. Are there any other persons on the line that are recording? Identify yourselves now, please. Okay, we will, hearing none, move right into a roll call and call to order. I don't see that Member Johnson, who usually does that, is on the line yet. But because we do have a quorum and we want to keep moving, I'll have Member Ekstrom step in and do the roll call for us. Certainly. Chair Poiety.
Here.
Member Karen.
Here.
Member Wall.
Here.
Member Hollins.
Here.
Mary Weigardner.
Here.
Member Ekstrom is here. Glenn is going to be here shortly, so he'll take over then. Superintendent, I see that you're here. Do we have Andy as Business Manager here this evening? I don't know that he was expected to be here, I'm just asking.
I don't see him on the line.
I don't either. Okay.
I do see that Coach Kucheski is here, and he's part of the agenda. And here it's Member Johnson Musad is here now also.
There he is.
Hi, friends.
Hello. Hi, Glenn. I just took a roll call and we're all here.
Excellent.
It's all on you now, my friend.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll move right into public comment, and we'll do this two ways. The first thing we'll ask is that anyone who's able to, because they've joined on the remote video portion of the call, you can indicate in the chat that you would like to be recognized for a public comment. And anyone who's unable to do that, we'll try, not only will we give you an opportunity to voice after we've done the ones from the chat, but we also recommend that if you send an email to the school committee email address indicating that you'd like to speak, that email address is school, S-C-H-O-O-L, com, C-O-M, at GPSK12.org. GPS, yeah, K12.org. That would be an easy way to make sure not only do we get your indication, but you can also let us know what it is that you'd like to comment in case you're unable to comment for some reason by voice. So, do we have anyone in the chat that would like to comment at this point? Member Johnson Musad.
I don't see anybody.
And let's check if we have any emails. Now would be the time. Anyone like to make a public comment? You'll be recognized for three minutes. Speak now into the chat, or speak verbally, or send us an email. I'll wait just a few more seconds. And I don't want anyone to feel that they are not being recognized, and we did move into this portion of the agenda rather quickly. So what I'll do at this time is we'll do committee reports, and then we'll go back and see if anyone wants to be recognized for a public comment at that point. Okay, so we're gonna move right, no one's in the chat, right? And we're not hearing from anyone?
Correct.
And I'm not seeing an email? Okay. So we will try again after committee reports. First up is the chairperson. I actually am gonna forego a report this evening. I'm assuming that the superintendent has a report. Superintendent Harper, do you have a report for us this evening?
Today, we were pleased to welcome back all of our staff, albeit many of us remotely and many in person, depending on the role that the person is playing. There are a lot of amazing educators, and when we're all together and working, it is great to feel the vibrancy of the educators that care so much about our students. So much has happened this summer that it is easy to forget that it was, in fact, summer, and that many of our teachers are not scheduled to work over that period of time, despite the fact that many of them put in hundreds of volunteer hours over the summer, and that the administrators have been working around the clock, along with the school committee and many others, and the custodians have been in the buildings, and food service has never stopped, and our admin assistants are back there getting everything ready. So it's terrific to have everyone back together focused on our students. Our professional development has kicked off. We have invested in our technology, and we are excited to launch in the remote learning platform because it is the vehicle that the school committee voted, and there's tremendous enthusiasm. There is a lot of learning that has to occur around this, and the professional development period is being very well utilized by our principals and our tech staff and our teachers to put together the best collaboration and plans to support our students. And this is really important because any of you that have done a job for any period of time, being asked to do it entirely differently is not a minor variation on it, it's an entirely new set of skills. So nobody became a teacher in 10 days. So spending 10 days working on remote learning, as an example, is a great investment of time and resources, but it's a small amount of the time that it actually takes to become proficient in a task. And we are really optimistic because everyone is coming in and setting their best foot forward, and they've done a lot of learning over the summer leading up to now. So we're quite pleased about that. We're looking forward to the vote tonight on the calendar because that will give the assurance to the families that this is the final calendar, and also the athletics. We know these are important topics. I would like to say there are a lot of questions in the community about the schedules, and we, like you, want to finalize our class schedules and rosters. These are the subject of collective bargaining in the sense that the school committee sets the start time and the end time of the school day, and those are in our teachers' contracts. So when families are looking for that information, that is one of the topics that is in negotiation because the remote environment is different. If you remember, we heard from many kindergarten parents who said, "If my kindergartner were in school, the typical school hours would be one thing, but in a remote environment, please give them lots of breaks. Please give them a different setup so that they can work in this environment." And we want to accommodate those developmentally appropriate needs, but we have to work differently with our teachers' union to do that. And so because we have to work through very complicated processes, not just Greenfield, but every school district in Massachusetts that is in any change to their working conditions, we're going through that process right now. In the last five business days, I think we've been in negotiations for four of those. I appreciate Member Ekstrom, Member Johnson Musad, for being in the negotiating team, and a number of our administrators and staff as well. So I'll conclude my remarks there. I do actually want to make one other announcement, that we distributed over 350 Chromebooks last week. And so I'd like to thank the administration that supported the delivery of Chromebooks at our pickup sites, including the high school and the middle school, our tech staff. We also have the Equity Program through GSET, which information was sent out, but we're going to continue to share this information. It's also posted on our website. This is a terrific partnership that allows Greenfield residents to take advantage of access to the internet right through GSET here in Greenfield. Well, thank you to the community's support that made that possible, and we're really looking to bring internet access to students and ensure that everyone's prepared. The last comment is that we're sharing, we have purchased and we're compiling supply sets for every student in the Greenfield Public Schools. So there will be information about when you can pick up your supplies from your child's school before we begin remote learning, and that will come from your child's school as they're being prepared and assembled. But we have a Greenfield Public Schools bag and school supplies for every single student. If you don't want to take advantage of that, that's fine, you can leave it, and we will use those supplies in other needed ways. But we are working to make sure that every family has the resources they need as we begin remote learning. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Thank you. Of course. Member Ekstrom, go ahead.
Hey, Jordana, are those, the Chromebooks were the delivery of some that we had ordered previously, right?
There have been multiple different orders at different points in time because we had grant funds, so every time we had a new grant award, we could purchase more. So I think the first ones that came in were ordered back in the spring. April, or thereabouts, came in over the summer, and then they were provisioned, and so those were the first for distribution. And then we've purchased multiple sets of new Chromebooks since then. We anticipate that because these are getting frequent use, we will need to replace them at some point, but we are asking families to take good care of them and try to continue to protect and make good use of them so that they are available to students for a long term.
Yeah, we actually purchased one for Sam, just thinking that it will make me less crazy thinking about what is he's doing that's not on a Chromebook but on a laptop, so I won't have to think about that. But also, my hope is that he will be able to use that throughout his career in school, and that will just be his, and I don't have to think about it. And I think that there are a number of other parents that are likely doing the same thing.
I agree, and our tech director is working on sort of specs for families. If you're interested in Able, some of our schools have sent out a, because we're purchasing school supplies, if you want to make an investment in your child's education that will last for many years, consider buying some technology like that. And so we will share that with you as soon as it becomes available from our tech office.
Great, thank you. I know, I would just, we were able to, and my husband has so much tech stuff, it was kind of like, you know what, let's just make it easy for us. So, anyway, thank you. I appreciate the update.
And if you don't mind, Superintendent Harper, just a point of clarification around the same issue. I try my best to monitor some of the social media around questions from families about technology specifically. There's a lot of anxiety, I mean, you can imagine, there's a lot of anxiety when a family knows that they need something, and there's some concern over how they're going to get it. Can you just verify for me, what would be the process if a family at this point still hadn't been in contact with the school around needing technology for their student? What's the best way to approach that at this point?
Are you talking specifically about a Chromebook or other device to access the internet?
Yeah, I think mainly the Chromebook, but I just have seen a lot of parent anxiety, so I just want to rest assured that they can be helped and what the process would be for that.
Sure. So based on our survey of devices, we prioritize students that didn't have any device in their household at all first, and then work to ensure that every student that requested a device had one. Based on our survey responses, we were able to fulfill almost all of those requests, and we do have Chromebooks in stock for families that need one for their students if they requested one. That survey did close because we were working to find out how many people needed them and get them to them well before school started.
Sure.
So I would recommend that they email our tech director directly at C-A-R-H-O-L-1 at GPSK12.org. That's Carol Holtzberg. It's the first three letters of her first name, last name, and then the number one, at GPSK12.org. C-A-R-H-O-L-1 at GPSK12.org, if you need to borrow one. In addition, everyone that had one last spring, we allowed students to keep them over the summer for summer educational learning. We didn't make them recall them and then bring them back so that they could continue using them and building those skills. So the ones that were just distributed are in addition to those that were previously distributed in the spring and that are still in circulation.
Awesome, thank you. And we're in a good place in terms of the quantity. We have enough, so every kid that needs one, in theory, will be able to get one.
What I can say is that we base each distribution off the need at that time, so we do ask people to tell us before we then prioritize.
Obviously, if you don't know, you can't anticipate it. I get that.
That's exactly right. But what we are doing is anticipating, because we have many more that are on back order due to national shortages, what we're doing is if people need one, even if they're working on an older device and they'd like to borrow a more usable device for their student, just let us know, and we're working to prioritize those as they become available.
Awesome, thank you. Other questions from school committee members for the superintendent? Okay, hearing none. Subcommittee's, so we definitely had a budget subcommittee meeting last week. I'm wondering, not to put you on the spot, Member Ekstrom, but I'm gonna do it anyway, do you have a report for us from that subcommittee meeting?
I can just do a real sort of quick and dirty version of what we talked about, or just quick version. We spent some time talking about the format in which we review budget, and sort of the pros and cons of how we use the reports that we receive. And we're going to be moving over fully to Munis, which will mean, if, as, well, I suspect that the school committee actually needs to vote on that. And then Andy would provide us with the training. We also talked about a new hire that we need to do for the Assistant Superintendent/Curriculum Director, and we made a motion to recommend to the school committee to hire that person or to begin a search for that person. We are very sort of low on upper-level administrative staff, and that is a position that's been open for a while that I'm absolutely interested in filling, me personally, but the budget subcommittee also agreed. And we talked a little bit about a payroll slash HR person that was going to be hired to assist with those activities. We discussed the school committee's needing to vote our final budget, which will likely happen in September, and, but we can, we'll get more into that when the time comes. It's the reason being that the school committee approved what the superintendent was sending, but we haven't said this is what we actually expect. However, we're shooting for what the superintendent had sent anyway. So it's more of a formality, but it needs to be done. And I think that's about it. Any Jean or Amy, is there, did I miss anything?
That was a really good overview, more than I could have remembered. Thank you.
Okay.
Member Wall, anything to add? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, do we need an update from any other subcommittees at this time?
Jordana, should we be talking about our working with getting teachers and students in the school year starting, or is that not open for discussion just yet?
I'm not really clear, Member Ekstrom, on the specific discussion point. What about getting them started?
Just that we've been meeting with the union and working on how the school year is going to look, and coming to agreements when we can, and that how some of the things we can't necessarily make decisions about are based on not having had discussions with the union yet. For example, what a school day would look like specifically, or, I don't know, that's sort of just off the top of my head.
Right, I think I touched on that in my report earlier. We did issue a joint statement on Friday afternoon, and that was important because, while we don't have answers on everything, and there are many things that have to be decided, as you can imagine, the public has sort of asked for, even if you don't know everything, can you tell us what you do know? And so what we've committed to doing is trying to say, here's what we do know. And, you know, I want to be clear that negotiations are a slow process, and we have more than five units of individuals. And this is not to say that when we say we're speaking with the union about a schedule, that's not to say that we are designing a schedule based on what the union wants. It's to say that we're thinking about what's best for students, and as a necessary part of that, we're legally obligated to have a conversation with people that are employed to do that work. And so, you know, the committee has an obligation in this, and the superintendent, as a representative of the committee, has to engage in that. And it is very challenging for families. It's very challenging. I really fully understand. The private schools do not have this process at all, it's just different. And I want to reiterate that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education told us not to release plans before mid-August. The school committee was specifically prohibited from voting on plans before mid-August until August 12th. The committee had not voted on any of the three reopening models, so there was no way to bargain with teachers' unions until that vote was taken. You voted on the 12th, and then in the next two days, we had to create and finalize the 35-page documents that were submitted to the state by the due date on the 14th. It's little wonder, actually, that we've been able to meet these deadlines at all. But having said that, you know, to start on August, that was a Friday, so then the Monday, whatever that was, 17th, really, you know, giving us very little time to work with everybody necessary to get this all done. So to families at home that want to know, of course, it's very important, you want to set up your routines. One thing we're trying to do to help you with setting up your routines is offer family workshops on how best you can work within the remote learning schedule, some tips and strategies about the technology. You've heard from parents time and time again, "I'm not a teacher, I'm not necessarily tech-savvy, I can't, you know, I have a job, I can't be doing this all day." And, you know, some of that is going to be a challenge in this environment, but some parts of that we can do something about, and we're trying to help families navigate that. So we're working on putting that Parent Ed series together. Katie Karen, as one of the school committee reps, has agreed to be part of that series as well. So those are just some of the things that take place sort of behind the scenes.
Thank you, that was exactly what I thought you should say.
Thank you both. Any other questions about any of the reports, the superintendent's report or the budget subcommittee report, from the school committee members? Okay. So here at our public comment previously at 6:03, if anyone is on the line now that would like to comment, speak up or come back at the next meeting, which is in less than two weeks. Okay, so I'm not hearing anyone, and I am not seeing that we've received any emails. So we're gonna move forward. Anything in the chat?
Let's see. Nope, I don't see anything in the chat. I put the reminder for folks to mute their connections, and I would like to note that Member Hollins has joined the call.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we will move right into our new business. Item A, which is the revised 2021 school year calendar, and that is in the packet of materials. Oh, I should also mention, the packet of materials for school committee members has a number of back minutes that need to be voted on, but I noticed that voting on and approving the minutes was not in the agenda, so we're gonna hold off on that because it technically should be in the agenda because it is business that we're doing. So we will do that at our next meeting, which is also a regular meeting, and we'll move through all the meeting minutes at that time, which it looks like there's about a half dozen of them. Good times, good times. All right, so moving into, sorry, the revised 2021 school year calendar, which is in your packet. Superintendent Harper, would you like to give us an overview? You're on mute. Remember, that's my memoir title, no one else's. My COVID memoir. Amy, you're on mute.
All right, so as you will all remember, the Commissioner of Education granted 10 additional professional development days to prepare for what is invariably a different kind of year, no matter what model you're in. But there was a caveat that you had to start by September 16th, and if your district started after Labor Day, you had to apply for a waiver to be able to take advantage of those 10 professional development days. We finally got word back on our request, and so that was approved. So this calendar reflects that updated start date. The first day of school, according to the revised calendar for grades 1 through 12, is September 17th, which is a Thursday. The first day for kindergarten will be Monday, September 21st, and the first day of school for pre-K is Tuesday, September 22nd. There are a number of other changes in this calendar, including actually some days that we have, that were previously early release days that we removed from the calendar to better reflect the remote learning schedule. And there is no change to the end day of the year, again, because we built in the PD days at the beginning, and there's no change to the employee's start date. So just to be really clear, as I said at the beginning, employees reported to work today, and that work is underway. So I would ask, this has been shared with families as a draft calendar subject to school committee approval, but obviously, we are planning on fully using those PD days. One thing that we will be doing during this professional development time are parent and teacher meetings. They're not traditional parent-teacher conferences, but they're sort of check-ins about how did remote learning go in the spring, and what can we better do to support your student or your learner right now as we enter remote learning in the fall. So we will be fully utilizing these days, and we want to ensure that we have access to them. And then the rest of the school calendar, we're really glad students are coming back. And even though it's remotely with the live instruction we have planned, we're eager to have that connection and the instruction going for students. So I would ask that you approve the calendar as it's laid out. If anybody's looking online, it is in the packet, and you can certainly look at it, but it was also sent out on email to all Greenfield Public Schools staff and families last week.
Awesome, thank you. So I would start with a motion from a school committee member, moving that the school committee adopt the revised 2021 school year calendar as presented. So, I heard Member Karen for sure. Do I have a second?
Second.
From Member Wall. Any discussion or questions?
Member Karen, I just have a quick question.
Please, go ahead.
I absolutely gotta vote this in, it looks great. It lists meet and greets on September 15th, and I've already seen some people asking questions about what that means. I know we're still working out all kinds of details, but I didn't know if we could touch on that a little.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the meet and greet is traditionally held right before school starts, and it's a chance for families that are new to the building to see the building for the first time. It's not a parent-teacher conference in the sense that parents aren't having a learning conference about their student, but the student gets to see the classroom, kind of get a sense of where everything is, and it's an important sort of ritual at the beginning of the school year. It's also a required event for teachers, and we didn't want to lose that in the remote environment. So the meet and greet will be held this year, but they will be held remotely. So do not come to your child's school in person during a meet and greet. We put this in the notice that it will be a remote event. Different schools are doing this a little differently because, as you can imagine, it looks different at an elementary school than at the high school. So I won't be too specific because each school has a slightly different plan. But as an example, it could look like a Google Meet call where the principal provides an overview of the school year, the calendar and the schedules that students will follow, and then takes families on a virtual tour of the school while they participate live in the streaming, and then ask questions and answers. So it is, in addition to parent and teacher meetings that are more one-on-one, and it is an event to launch the school year and get students and families familiar with the sort of the launch of the year, the building, the structures, the routines, and the remote environment.
Any other questions or comments from school committee members? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote, and Member Johnson Musad asks that you do a roll call for us.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom.
Yes.
Member Hollins.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety.
Yes.
Member Wall.
Yes.
Mary Weigardner.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Awesome, thank you. We will move right into our second item, which is the Athletics MIAA update, and it looks like Coach Kucheski is on the line. I don't know, Superintendent Harper, if it's you or him or both of you that'll introduce this.
No, I'm here. I am here.
He's here. Go ahead, Kucheski.
You just don't want to see me on video, it's COVID-20 in my case. So I sent you out all the packets last week, and for me to go through everything... So I sent you out all the packets last week, and for me to go through everything, we'd be here until midnight. So I'm just going to give you a quick overview, quick overview of what has been going on, and it has changed since I sent all of this stuff. Some of the modifications have changed already. So if you look at the second page that I put on there, we're only going to ask for Fall I sports now because of the fact everything is so fluid that the winter could be looking totally different than what is on paper right now. So we're just asking for Fall I at this time to be approved by the school committee. And what that means is, is that we're asking for field hockey, girls' field hockey, golf, girls' cross-country, and boys' cross-country to be able to participate. We, as Franklin County Athletic Directors, got together and felt that this is going to be the safest for our area schools, is going to, for all of us to get together to play, we're not going to go south of here, let's say. So we're not going to go into Hampshire County. We're not going to go to Hampton County for travel purposes. For where our numbers are, we felt that it was best for us just to play each other to give our kids some type of opportunity to be able to play. We also are looking at staggering the days for the teams to play, so everybody will have an opportunity to do something. So our traditional fall sports being football, soccer, cheering, we're going to ask for also the ability to be able to have the kids participate in those. Then they'll be coach-led. MIAA has granted what we call a coaching out-of-season waiver, so those coaches who coach those traditional sports will be allowed to coach those kids in those sports, which will be held at a later date. And I'll get to that later. But our coaches are going to work around those athletes that they usually see to allow them to play the sports that they usually don't play. So for example, a football kid is going to have an opportunity to play golf or cross-country. They might have an opportunity to play four sports, and I think that's kind of neat that we give these student athletes this kind of opportunity because they might, let's hopefully, they never see that opportunity again, but they could say they were one of the first four-sport athletes in Greenfield since the '70s. So I think that's kind of neat for being able to see that. So we're going to get together as coaches, if all the coaches get together, to try to stagger the start times for workouts for those traditionals, and also the games being played and the ones that we're going to be allowed to play. Let's see, transportation. So we came up as, I talked to transportation in Greenfield, and we decided that, well, all of our Franklin County ADs decided that we're only going to have a varsity-only travel team, so it will be limited on transportation. So a big bus only can put 14 kids on a bus. In our situation, I talked to our transportation, it would take two small buses to be able to transport our kids to an area meet or match or what have you. So field hockey and cross-country would be limited to 14 participants to travel, and it's also going to put down the amount of kids that are being allowed at each site. I'll get to that more on the site thing later. Golf is only eight because there's six people that participate in a match with two alternatives. So then that also concludes the coach. But in Greenfield, our transportation is going to be able to help us get everything going, and they've been very receptive in that. Until I get the approval, there are some modifications that have to be had at each field. We have to have hand sanitizing stations, and all the PPE stuff that we're all going to learn as teachers, that we've all learned over the course of this, is all going to be put on our fields. Some of the reasons why we did not have soccer in the fall, the MIAA has said that we could do soccer in the fall. As Franklin County ADs, we said we did not want to do soccer in the fall because the modifications that they're asking for us, our coaches, to do would have been too hard to enforce. For example, playing soccer, you use your head, you use your foot, you know, you're in close distance of each other. The modifications were there was no heading the ball, there was no throw-ins, there was no corner kicks, and you had to be six feet away from the person you're defending. We didn't feel it was going to be a sport. We felt that, as Franklin County ADs, that it was probably going to be more beneficial for our kids to do drills and skills. And with our programs, starting at seventh, you know, with our school programs, starting at seventh grade, we'd be able to get those kids in skills and drills and introduce a sport and, you know, make it, you know, something that they can work forward to at the end of February, March. Let's see. You guys, does anybody have any questions? Right now, I'm talking way too much, and I'd rather not.
Any questions for Coach Kachewski? I think you're doing a great job. I appreciate actually some of the detail.
Well, I want to try to answer as many questions as you have because, you know, it's been a very hard situation for all of us and with athletics, and, you know, this is just step one for us to get going here. Step two is going to be able to get our student athletes there, to get them, I know they want to be there, but I want to make it for everybody. Sometimes we've, the kids that get lost in the shuffle here that I'm worried about immensely, you know, we've got group chats going and, you know, we're putting it out there, but I am very much worried about the kids that fall through the cracks, and I have already been in talks with other kids to say that we need to get to these certain places to be able to make sure that everybody knows the information. You know, so those are the things I'm worried about. This is the first step in going ahead. But again, we don't start till the 18th of September, and once I get the go-ahead, I'm going to do the best I possibly can to make sure that we get everybody involved, and some of the older student athletes are also, have already started moving on this, to get everybody involved in the process. So, and there's one thing that I wanted to talk about, too, is the guidelines for the amount of people that you can have at games. Now, right now, Governor Baker is, I believe, at 50, and I think that was a typo in that I said no fans. It said 50 for people being on fields, and for us to be able to have 50 people on field would almost, it would be very hard for us to be able to police that. So as Franklin County ADs, we felt that we're making the recommendation to have no fans because our field is so wide open, and I don't know if we, as one person, could be able to police that very well. So we kind of came upon and said, everybody, just let's go no fans. So in turn, I've been in discussion with various companies to have cameras put at the fields so that it could be livestreamed for people, and I've also gone as far as talked to the one and only Philippe Simone to maybe get CCTV involved, and I know he's pretty excited about trying to get that going, too. So that's one of the things that's on our plate, and I think that if we can get something going for the fall, it'd be great, but I'm also looking more towards the wintertime, too. But again, this is all fluid. As I said on Friday, we got all the modifications from the MIAA. We're going to have, for each team, we're going to have a volunteer COVID coach that is going to take temperatures of every child coming onto the fields. They're going to document who's there, what they had. Every day, their job is just to make sure that every kid is accounted for for contact tracing, for anything that is, you know, they're going to ask them how they feel, the whole nine yards with hand sanitizers, hand wipes, and all that stuff. So if you want all the rules modifications that the MIAA sent out on Friday, I could send you that link. But on the MIAA website, the COVID Task Force has a main page that has all the modifications on there and everything that they have been doing and how they go about it. So that's pretty much my spiel.
Great, thank you. Questions and comments from, actually, let's start with a motion. Let's be good about our procedure here and start with a motion, something like, I move to approve participation by the Greenfield Public Schools in the Fall Only Modified Sports Season for School Year 2021.
So moved.
That was Member Karen, and a second?
Second.
I think was Mayor Weidergartner, am I right? Sorry, I got a fruit fly in front of my face here, people. Okay. Questions or comments?
Can I add one thing?
Please, go ahead.
I have a question.
Go ahead with the question, and I'll add one thing that I forgot to ask for, but go ahead.
Sure, Mayor Weidergartner.
I just wondered, Mike, it's no penalty if you didn't, but did you run any of this by the Valerie Bird or the Greenfield Board of Health, or are you just going strictly with your MIA?
No, I sent everything to Pam Owen, our nurse, our head lead nurse of the public schools, and she's been in contact with the BOH. And as far as I know, and I'm hoping I'm saying this right, is that she said we look good and just making sure we follow the guidelines.
Yeah, it seemed fine with me, yeah.
So.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Member Karen? Go ahead, Coach, and then Member Karen.
Well, there's one thing I just forgot to add is that, I'm at, you know, with our out-of-season coaching, with the soccer coaches and the cheering coach and girls' volleyball coach and football coach, that I was going to ask for them to do their out-of-season coaching twice, two or three times a week, that I was just asking for a quarter of their stipend to be paid for that traditional fall season, and then when they complete the regular season at the end of February and March and April, that they pay the three-quarters. That's just a change.
Do we need to vote on that? What do you think, Superintendent Harper? Do we need to? Yes, okay. So a friendly amendment to the motion to allow for 25% of the stipend for, I'm sorry, was that Fall?
No, Amy, 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 let's do, it's two separate motions, hon. One is, are we going to do it? The second one is, let's pay them.
Okay, so we'll do a second motion. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have an additional question.
Please, so I think I had Member Karen and then Mayor Weidergartner.
Sorry, yes, that's right.
Me, too, me, too.
And Member Ekstrom.
All right, well, thanks, Coach. That was a really great overview. I'm just going to try to repeat back what exactly I heard, so I am sure I got it right. Cross-country, boys and girls, field hockey, and golf, all can play games, but the other traditional sports will just be running practices and drills.
Correct.
Great. And you said that on the busing, that we can make it work with just running varsity teams of travel. Would that be, this is a curiosity question, because I know in times our cross-country team has been smaller or larger, would that be a varsity boys and a varsity girls, or would that be 14 total varsity?
Well, that's one of the things I got to work out, but I would like, our girls' cross-country in the past has been small. So, you know, I kind of used 14 as a both boys and girls because of the numbers that we've had in the past.
Right.
Knowing our transportation department, they'll make it work, how many kids that need to be at a meet. I always have to look at how many kids we could have a meet, first of all.
Right.
Because we might be playing because of social distancing guidelines. But, so that's kind of a number, it was that fit with the amount of people they could put on a bus, and that's not only Greenfield, I get worried about Turners and Pioneer and those people because they have to use the big buses, and they can only fit 14, and it's going to cost them twice the amount if they have over that number. So we had to kind of, you know, fudge it around a little bit, so we felt that that number was the best. And I think we're in a unique situation because we have a great transportation department that'd be able to service us at this time. So that's kind of, you know, where we're going with that.
Great. I just, I really do support getting this season going. I think you made a really valid point about, you know, worrying about some of our kids, not just getting the information, but we're trying to make as many touch points and community spots for these kids, so we're checking in on them, and this is just another way that we can make sure that our community and our children are okay during this really difficult time. And I think we always find when children who need this type of activity can do it safely, and they perform better in school, they have safer home lives, and they feel better just in general. I know for me, that would be true. So I really support all of the hard work you've been doing, and I hope that we can make this work.
Thank you. And, you know, just to add on one thing, too, all the coaches have been told that, you know, there's, a lot of kids have tough-time transportation because kids might be working and stuff, and we told them to do later practices to make it easier for parents to get their kids there, just to give you an FYI.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Member Karen, that was really well said. So we had Mayor Weidergartner and then Member Ekstrom.
Okay, I'm just looking at the schedule that you sent out, the Fall I, which you've explained very well, and thank you so much for that. I am curious about winter and spring. Are you anticipating not having those, or you'll come back to us?
Oh, my goodness gracious, Mayor. I'm trying to get through Fall I. So October 18th.
I know the feeling.
October 18th is when the COVID Task Force is going to be, well, they're going to meet periodically, but October 18th is when we're supposed to be meeting on the winter sports. Right now, you know, we're going as planned, except for indoor track because our indoor track is Smith College, and they're shut down for the year. So indoor track is going to be out. I can tell you that there have been other places, being other states, that are playing hockey safely. There are other states that are playing basketball safely, you know, but I can't say how it's going to look. We are going as status quo as of right now, other than indoor track.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want a motion?
We have a motion already on the table.
For the 25%?
We're going to do that after we vote on this one.
Okay.
I believe it was Member Ekstrom.
Yes. So I always bring the fun when I ask questions like this. Where does the liability for someone who may get COVID fall in this? So a kid gets COVID, and what are the, what's the liability that the school district has?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I think that with anything, I would, on that sports compliance at a station, I think I said it right, piece of paper that I sent in that packet, that has a little bit of what we, as coaches, have to go through to be able to cover ourselves for liability. You know, I can't speak more than that, and I really honestly don't know that question. I think it's just with anything, I think that every student athlete that does our family ID, that sign-up platform that they have, have to, the parents have to sign off on them, that the school has no liability. My son or daughter can participate, the participation thing. So I would think that would fall underneath that. All our coaches are going to be trained, and they'll all be signing the forms that they've done COVID training. So I would think that we would be covered, but in this day and age, you know, that's a good question. I can't, I can't really answer that question other than what I just said.
Yeah, I wonder if we're going to have to have some sort of additional, you know, two asterisks related to COVID as they're signing the waiver.
Comment?
Go ahead, Susan, I'm good.
I was just on the same topic. I'm going to mention that, I think I mentioned before, it might be helpful to contact our insurer and to ask if there's anything we should include in the permission, since they insure us. Thank you.
I have reached out to the insurance representative, and we are continuing to await further word.
All righty. Thank you both.
If you're trying to acknowledge me, Chair Piretti, you're on mute.
Remember, that's my memoir, that's why I did it.
That's right.
So I think Mayor Weidergartner was next, and then Member Johnson.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
No, 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 I asked my question. No, no, I asked my question. Go ahead, Glenn.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thanks so much for your work on this and all the thought and effort that's gone into it. I really appreciate it, and I really appreciate the intent to get as many of our young people involved in these important activities as they can. Can you talk a little bit about the rationale behind having the varsity students be the ones selected for the traveling versus any other approach that might have been taken?
Well, our philosophy at the varsity level is they're going to be juniors and seniors mostly, and they're not going to be around anymore to participate, and so we have to give them the opportunity to participate. The reason we don't have the other ones, we have skills and drills for them. We're not going to eliminate JV. We're going to ask those kids to come to practice, but we'll have travel teams of 14. So some of those JV kids could be practicing and could be on the travel team every other day, let's say. But varsity sports is what all our kids strive to be, is varsity athletes, and we're trying to, you know, put forth the effort that those kids have put through for the last two or three years, and, you know, juniors and seniors are varsity athletes, and that's kind of what we're striving for.
Appreciate that, thank you. And I guess, just looking at the plan, the one thing that worries, like, kind of worries me the most is probably those bus trips, but I see how much forethought is being put into it. I'm just wondering about increasing air circulation on the buses. I'm assuming that maybe windows will be open, or maybe I'm not sure if that's part of the plan or not, but just wanting to get as much fresh air into those buses as possible.
That is, transportation guidelines do have airflow with the windows down. I do that, I know that for a fact, but Transportation Director would have all that more.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you. That answers my questions.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from school committee members? I just have a couple of things, Mike. It sounds like, in terms of transportation, we are able to do it in-house as opposed to needing buses from Kuzmeskus, is that accurate?
That's what I'm shooting for.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to assume.
We also could, if I get the blessing, I know this has been kind of hard in the past, is have parents drive. You know, I have always been against that, just because of liabilities, but in this time and age, it might be needed more so than ever, and when we're traveling just inside the county, I don't have a big issue with it anymore, because if we're just going to Turners, I don't see why we need to spend $350 for a bus. It would save us time, and that's something that I would like to get done if we could, too.
Sure, sure, thank you. And then, I just really appreciate that you found a silver lining in all of this upheaval for sports, which for a lot of our student athletes feels like life, especially when they are competing. I know, I was a, actually, I did not grow up in Massachusetts, I was a four-sport, believe it or not, letter athlete, and, let's see, so I did field hockey, volleyball, basketball, even though I'm too tall for basketball, and softball. They also, they also switched it in New York, and you can now only do three sports, but way back when, 30-plus years ago, I had that opportunity, and I think it's great to find that silver lining for our student athletes that, you know, might otherwise not have been on the golf team. So thank you for approaching it that way.
I bet you were a great guard.
I always had the best high tops on the team, I'll say that. It was all about the fashion for me. Any other last questions or comments before we take a vote? Okay, so, Recording Secretary Susan Farber, would you be so kind as to read the motion back for us?
Yes, thanks for your patience. The motion is to approve participation by Greenfield Public Schools in the fall-only modified sports season for the school year 2020 to 2021.
Thank you. And let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please. Member Johnson moves on.
You're on mute, Glenn.
Glenn is on mute. That's the subtitle. Amy's on mute, and Glenn is, too.
He's still on mute.
Sounds like he's singing.
I really thought I pushed the button. I was saying it was the sequel, you guys were saying it was the subtitle. Okay. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
So I'm going to abstain, not because I have any question about the importance of the sports and athletics in general, but I want to hear what the liability is. If that all works out, then I am absolutely yes, but right this minute, I'm going to abstain.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Awesome, thank you.
This is Susan Farber, just checking in here. Member Karen, I didn't hear her vote.
She voted yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for checking.
Don't forget.
Okay, so we need to do a second motion here regarding the stipend for the coaches, and if anyone's ready to give that motion, please go ahead and interrupt me, otherwise I can try to put something together.
I have one.
Please, go ahead, Member Hollins.
Am I correct that this is for the sports that we will offer, correct?
For the, yes, the sports that will be offered in the spring, I think the fall, too.
Can I make clarification?
Please, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm asking for a quarter stipend pay for the...
I understand that, I just want to clarify, are these the designated fall sports we're talking about?
Yes, that are being moved.
So this is the motion I tried. For the designated fall sports and their coaches, or regarding the designated fall sports and their coaches, to allow 25% of the coaching stipend paid now, and the remaining 75% of stipend paid when the sport program is completed.
In fall, too, sure.
If I understood what we're doing, that's the motion.
That is.
So it's for the designated fall sports.
Do you want to know which one those are?
We might as well be specific.
And put them in parentheses at the end, yeah.
You ready?
Please.
Football, cheering, boy soccer, girl soccer, girl's volleyball.
And are those, those are all fall-two sports, correct?
Right.
So if we said to pay the stipend, if we said to pay the stipend for the fall-two sport coaches, that would make the, that would streamline the motion?
Yeah, it just says it in the guidelines, that traditional fall sports being moved to fall, too.
So either way is fine, okay, okay, awesome. So do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
From Member Johnson Musad, and Susan Farber, do you have what you need?
So now, the correction that Mike made is that for the designated fall-two sports.
That's right.
Okay.
It just streamlines it, it's, yeah. Any discussion or questions around this motion? Okay, so, excellent, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Member Karen?
Sorry, if I can interrupt, took me a bit.
Please, go ahead.
I have the list from Coach Kasepse. Is football, boys' football, or is that a co-ed team?
Football is for everybody.
Got it, thank you so much.
Thank you. Go ahead with the roll call, Member Johnson Musad.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you all for that. Coach Kachewski, thank you very much for that detailed update and working with us on those motions, I appreciate it. I look forward to seeing...
I appreciate you.
Oh, I look forward to seeing what our student athletes do, and then, you know, if we get some livestream capabilities, I say we start a tradition of a Thanksgiving Day field hockey match with Gillamonegu.
Well, first of all, I have to thank all...
That would be fun.
Thank you very much for everything that you people have done for this and your support, but I don't know if I want to watch girls playing field hockey in skirts on a frozen field. It's much better with football.
Touche.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, you, too. Okay, so we do have an executive session scheduled for this meeting. We will keep the public meeting open in case we need to come back and do a vote in public session, but I will...
I don't think we do. I don't think we do.
Member Ekstrom says she doesn't think we do. Superintendent Harper, do you have an opinion on that?
I don't believe you do.
Wonderful, we're going to move to, we can move to close the public session, let's do that after we open the executive session. And let me just read, the executive session may be called MGL C30A subsection 21-2, exemption number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And it's supposed to say, if the chair so declares, and I do declare, do I have a motion to open the executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so that was Mayor Wiedegartner and Member Johnson Musad. Let's do a roll call vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, so now we will actually, I will take a motion to adjourn the public session.
So moved. Second.
I think that was Member Hollins, am I right? Yes. And a roll call vote on that, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
I was muted, yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Prayati?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned.